Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at 6:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Call to order, pledge of allegiance, followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentations and proclamations. Okay, first up is the Mayor's Award. Yeah, I'll read this real quick. The City of Leavenworth, Leavenworth High School National Honor Society is presented the Mayor's Award for Community Service. Leavenworth High School National Honor Society is hereby presented the Mayor's Award for Community Service for their assistance during the City of Leavenworth Easter Egg Hunt. Their dedication and commitment to the City of Leavenworth is apparent by their generosity and love of the community. You wouldn't say anything?
I can say a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, and just introduce?
Yeah. So my name is Brenda Kramer and I am the faculty sponsor for the National Honor Society at Leavenworth and we are thrilled to be doing back community service events in the community now with COVID restrictions relaxing and we're looking forward to really helping the city out on other events. I've been working with Mrs. Baker and really hoping that we're going to be able to help out with a lot more of your events here in the city. We love to be able to give back and that's one of our main pillars of character is service. So we're really happy and thank you very much. I'd like to introduce the treasurer of our chapter, Lauren Schollengert, and let her say a few words.
Thank you so much for having us here. We're very honored to be a part of this city and to help the city how we could. We had a great time with the Easter egg hunt and we were just so happy to be part of those kids' day and to make it a little bit brighter. So thank you so much for having us.
You're welcome.
Thank you guys for...
Commissioner Bowder, I know, was telling them...
There were two young women that I would like to get their names at some point and write in my referral because they worked for three solid hours painting faces with me and I really appreciated that.
Yeah, that's always, you know, the show right there. How many did you have, you think? Two, three hundred?
I think over four hundred kids that we painted. Just the ones we painted.
Well, we'll definitely get their names and I'll email them to Mayor.
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Okay, first proclamation. City of Leavenworth proclamation. Whereas water is our most valuable and important natural resource, playing a vital role in all of our daily lives. And the water produced by the Leavenworth Water Department is the most reliable and best tasting water in all of Leavenworth County. And whereas a safe, reliable water supply is critical to the success of our community, it creates jobs, attracts industry and investment, and provides for the health and welfare of citizens in ways ranging from disease prevention to the suppression and the quality of life we enjoy. Whereas, we often take water supply for granted until it is threatened either by drought, water main breaks, or some other event, any measure of a successful society. Low mortality rate, economic growth, and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some ways related to access safe water. Whereas, we are all stewards of the water supply and infrastructure upon which future generations depend. And whereas each citizen of the City of Leavenworth is called upon to help... Let's see, where was I at? Here. To help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice responsible water conservation, to get involved in local water issues. And now therefore I, Kamala Emily Onhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th as National Drinking Water Week. And this is for you, Joel. There you go. You want to say a few words?
Probably not.
Oh, you'd say hey. Say hi.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the sentiments. We do work very hard to provide clean water for the town, reliable water. That's what we really work on the most. We are continuously working on the infrastructure and trying to make it better so that we have fewer main breaks. We've managed to cut those down over the years from, oh, averaging one about every three days before I arrived here to now we're at thirty days. Significant increase or decrease in the number. And it just saves you on pavement repairs, sidewalk repairs, everything else down the line. So we're continuing to work on that over the years. Big project we're working on now. We've got the plans almost prepared for a new water storage tank to be added to the system, basically about doubling the system. And probably be visiting y'all within about a month or so. We're getting an SRF loan from the state. It do require the city commission to basically approve us doing it. Why, no, haven't figured that one out, but we'll get it taken care of here shortly. Be a lot more questions, I'm sure, when that comes up. So we'll be back.
Thanks, Joel. Okay, proclamation for National Small Business Week. It's windy. Whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstones of our nation's promise. And whereas small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and passion for what they do, and whereas when we support small business, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas because this country's 28 million small businesses create nearly two out of three jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spear economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. Now therefore I, Kamala Emily Onhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th to be National Small Business Week and urge all citizens to acknowledge and celebrate the achievements made by small business both locally and nationally and encourage all citizens to live local. Sticky notes. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. You want to talk for a moment?
Sure.
Won't talk long. Wendy Scheit, the Leavenworth Main Street Director. You all have the most passionate, creative, dedicated, knowledgeable, resilient, small businesses, at least here in the downtown that I'm aware of. They're just amazing. I hope you all get to know them, use them frequently, shop local, shop small. I can't tell you, say enough about the different businesses. We have a nice mix and many, many restaurants as well. So enjoy downtown.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Lee.
Okay, National Travel and Tourism Week. Whereas travel to and within Kansas provides a significant economic benefit for the state with 31.4 million visitors to Kansas in 2020, spending $5.4 billion. Stacking $5.4 billion worth of $1 bills would reach 370 miles high, similar to the distance from Hiawatha, Kansas to Garden City, Kansas. And whereas, when indirect and induced impacts are considered, tourism supported a total of 80,152 jobs, representing 4.3% of all jobs in the state, or one out of every 23 jobs ranking tourism as the 12th largest industry in Kansas. And whereas tourism activities supported 270 million in state tax revenues in 2020, local governments received 321 million in revenue from economic activity associated with visitors, which equals to $520 in tax revenue per household in Kansas. Whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than 67% of all trips taken in Kansas, and business travel accounts for the remaining 33%. And whereas the City of Leavenworth realized approximately 8.2 million from overnight visitor expenditures in 2021, per the Smith Travel Research Report, validating the unique significance of the national travel industry in the lives of the citizens of Leavenworth, Kansas. Now therefore I, Kamala Emily Onhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th, 2022 to be National Travel and Tourism Week and call upon the people of Leavenworth to observe this coming week as sanctioned by the U.S. Congress with appropriate ceremonies and activities.
Okay, National Travel and Tourism Week. Thank you. You want to say something?
Sure.
Kristy Lee, Director of Tourism for the Leavenworth Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is a big deal for our industry and we try and do proclamations every year to just show the support nationally. And the theme for this year's National Travel and Tourism Week is the Future of Travel. And there's different events going on all across the country to support this event and we are actually holding a photo contest. So if you, and we're going to run it through our Facebook page. So if you haven't liked our Facebook page, go online, it's visit Leavenworth KS and submit one of your photos and we're trying to show the making Leavenworth a destination. So thank you and...
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bailey.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees in the City of Leavenworth, Kansas increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Now therefore I, Kamala Emily Onhard, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, hereby proclaim April 29th, 2022 to be Arbor Day. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our Arbor Day celebration is this Friday at 2:00 at David Brewer Park. We are planting a tree in honor of Mr. John Hendrickson. He was a park superintendent for the City of Leavenworth throughout the 90s. So come see us Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Old Business. Consideration of previous meeting minutes. Minutes from April 12th, 2022, regular meeting. Any questions or concerns from fellow commissioners?
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the minutes of the April 12th.
Second. Okay, begin voting. Commissioner Hingel?
Aye.
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 Okay, passed. Okay, next up, second consideration ordinance. Number 8185, ordinance to vacate a portion of right-of-way at 1507 Shawnee Street.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, there have been no changes from first reading. Just as a quick reminder, this is a small piece of right-of-way that resulted from the realignment of Shawnee Street more than 20 years ago. It was always the city's intention to grant that to the neighboring property owner who has maintained it this entire time. So this just formalizes that process.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? Okay, just need a roll call. Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner, okay. Aye. Okay. Okay, New Business. Public comment, i.e. items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Public comment is limited to two to three minutes and no action will be taken by the commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address. A sign-up sheet will be provided in the commission chambers for anyone wishing to speak. Fill out the sheet with requested information when you enter the meeting. So do we have... Yes, Mr. Sam Moore. Okay. Hello there. Just state your name and address, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you for your time. My name is Samuel Moore. My address is locally Leavenworth, 420 South Las Vegas.
Okay.
I'm a member of the local Toastmaster Empowered to Speak Club and...
I know.
Lovely hand to hear. I'm the current president of Empowered to Speak and we meet twice a month at the American Legion. For our open house, we had Commissioner Bauer come out there and speak to us. Actually, she did it through Zoom and...
Where she was mayor, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do appreciate that.
Yeah.
And we actually have some of our members. I found a member, Toastmaster Dr. Chevelle. She founded the club several years ago and she actually came up from Texas to help present this. And also, we have Toastmaster Liki Evans and he's over at the Legion. Past president. So we are very thankful for her to come do that. It says certificate of appreciation from Empowered to Speak Toastmasters Club to Ms. Nancy Bowden in recognition of outstanding support of Toastmasters International Communication and Leadership Programs. Signed, Dr. Sharice Chevelle and Samuel Moore, President. So thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Dr. Chevelle talked to me about Toastmasters when she first started it and I knew it was a good program because I did come and speak to Toastmasters and what I talked about was how scared I am of public speaking. So we never really talked about the city, but I do, this is so nice of you guys to do this and you have such a wonderful program. Anybody that is out there in the public and wants to learn to better communicate in any realm, Toastmasters is so helpful and they've got such a wide variety of people with different backgrounds and different, you know, levels of speaking ability that they've done so well in the community. So I appreciate what Toastmasters does for our community too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Next up, Mayor's Appointments. Is there anyone else? Oh, sorry, was there anyone else? Anyone else? Sorry, I forgot. Okay, yeah. They tell me, I think.
Yeah, they went.
Okay, Mayor's Appointments. Mayor Lee Onhard moved to appoint to the Building Code Boards of Appeals Patrick Peterson to a term ending May 1st, 2027. Reappoint to the Electrical Board of Appeals Lance Levin to a term ending May 1st, 2027. Reappoint to the Library Board Pauline Graver to a term ending April 30th, 2026. Reappoint to the Mechanical Board of Appeals Joseph Brightwell to a term ending May 1st, 2027. And appoint to the Plumbing Board of Appeals Steve Morris to a term ending May 1st, 2027. Just need a, I motioned it, so I just need a second.
Second.
Begin voting. Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Consider Street Closure Request. Juneteenth Parade, June 18th, 2022.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'm going to turn this over to our city clerk, Sarah Bodencenter, and our police chief, Pat Kitchens. I also believe we have some representatives from the parade here today.
Yeah, okay. Madam Mayor and Commissioners, before you leave, there's a request for street closure from Delaware Street to Broadway, I'm sorry, from Delaware Street, from Broadway to Second Street, and from Second Street to Doerty Park on Saturday, June 18th, from 9:00 AM to noon for a Juneteenth Parade. City staff and the event coordinators met on April 18th to review the request and ended up amending the original route of the parade. A map was provided in your agenda packet to show where the closure would occur if approved by the commission. Letters were sent to properties along the proposed parade route advising them of the street closure request and letting them know of the consideration this evening. Obviously, Chief Kitchens is here if there are any questions, along with Ms. Joanna Schultz with the parade.
Yeah, Mrs. Schultz, yeah, thanks for being here. I am, yeah, I think we'd just like to a little bit know more, a little about your parade. Want to give us an about that day?
Great. So Juneteenth, as you know, is a combination of the words June and teen because the slaves in Texas in 1865 got the word two years later that they were finally free. And so that has been a consistent celebration in African-American communities. Of course, it started in the South and migrated north and then, of course, east and west. So we wanted to do a parade here this year because in the past, I think, 10 years or so, we haven't had a celebration for Juneteenth. And we thought it'd be a great idea with it being a new federal holiday to really celebrate it with a parade in our community. So our parade will be limited to 50 floats or cars. It will start on the east side of Broadway, go up Delaware, and turn on Second Street to the park, to Doerty Park. We estimate it'll take probably two hours, two to two and a half hours for the whole parade. And then at the park at 12:00, we will have a festival. And the festival is from 12 until 5:00. And so we hope to have food vendors, rides, games, live music to entertain people. It should be a good time. We're having it on Delaware. We know that during that day on Cherokee, they have the farmer's market. We didn't want to interfere with the farmer's market. So we thought if we go down Delaware or up Delaware, whichever way, East of Delaware, that it would be a good time for people to come downtown with lots of shops on Delaware. Hopefully, people will say, hey, I didn't know that was there. I know I learned today that there's a yarn shop. And so, and I'm surprised because I go past Delaware all the time. So I'm hoping that other people will also find businesses and it'll be a win-win situation.
Is any of my fellow commissioners... Do you want to introduce? Do you need to introduce your...
Oh, yes.
Who do you have with you, Joel?
Yes, this is Georgette Diggs, Dr. Georgette Diggs. And you met Lucky Evan. In the back, we have William and Sam. I know Sam, really. And so this is a free event and we're hoping that the community will just come out and support it and have a great time.
Well, I'm definitely excited. Just want to say thank you and your team for spearheading this. As one commissioner, I'm definitely in support of the parade and I'm excited to be a part of it and decided, very excited to see this come to pass in our community. So thank you.
Our community always loves parades and I think it'll be a good addition to the celebration.
No, I'm excited about it too, you know, just something that can reoccur every year.
Yes.
Yep.
That's our goal.
Commissioner Martin, you have anything?
You answered already the one question I had.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
What you said earlier was that the plan is for this to go every year and I certainly support that, but as we come into the budget cycle, the police department accounts for the couple of big parades that we have in the budget, Veterans Day and St. Patrick's Day Parade. So if this is going to get to a point where it equals that, we'll need to have, we'll need to make sure that that's accounted for in the police department's budget in terms of officers working overtime and that sort of thing. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, that's the plan. We're in support of that. We would need to, as we enter this process, make sure we account for a little bit of that.
Okay.
Okay? Yes, ma'am.
Good call, chief.
Okay, let's see, then I guess I just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the street closure requested as presented.
Second. Begin voting with Commissioner Hingel.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. We'll print our flyers.
Now you can do that. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next up is Consider Request to Abate Assessment: Nuisance Fees for 212 Olive. And my goodness, I hope all of you drove by there.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'll start on this item. We also have our city attorney here and our director of planning and community development, Julie Hurley, who oversees the code enforcement process. 212 Olive has been a chronic problem for at least a decade. We have been in court numerous times when we talk about blighted properties in the city. We talked about this recently, a goal setting. We talked about all the options on the table. One of them that sometimes we get asked about is when the judge authorizes some type of abatement. I think this is an example or can be an example of sometimes when that doesn't work. Over at least the last seven years, the city has assessed in actual costs well over $11,000. Those have gone unpaid. Those are junk cleanups, those are vegetation cleanups, those are stuff that we do to try to improve the neighborhood so people, the neighbors, don't have to have to see that. The property is now to the point where the property taxes have been delinquent for so long that it will appear on the upcoming sheriff's sale. And a neighbor has approached us, lives across the street, Mr. Bruce Wiley, who's here today and he can talk a little bit about the property. And he has a plan to buy it, tear down the structure that's there, which is well beyond saving, clean up the junk, clean up the vegetation, merely so that he and his neighbors do not have to have this eyesore. The problem with that for Mr. Wiley is he will incur several thousand dollars, if not over $10,000, in costs easily. But there are $13,235.69 of city assessments. Those are taxpayers' dollars that have gone over the years to try to clean up this property. And if you drove by there, you wouldn't think that we had done anything over the years. But again, this has been through the court system, through the abatement process many, many times. So the issue before you tonight is the request from Mr. Wiley. Should he purchase this, so you'd make any action contingent upon him purchasing it, would you be willing to waive the special assessments and nuisance fees in full? You have the option to reduce the fee total from $13,235.69 to $11,535.69. The difference in those being, a lot of times when we abate, we only abate the admin fees. We don't abate actual costs. But usually actual costs are mowings and the several hundred, not nuisance abatements over $10,000. And with Mr. Wiley purchasing this just for bite removal, there's no business case for him to make to spend those dollars. You can also suggest a reduction of a different amount. The commission can do that or you can deny the request. So the two notes before, you know, I turn it over to you to see if you want to hear from Mr. Wiley is it should be contingent upon him actually purchasing it if you're going to waive the fees. And I do want to point out that you do reserve the right at a later point to reassess those fees. fees. Say Mr. Wiley buys it, you agree to waive it, and a year passes and he doesn't do anything. I'm not saying he will, but that, you know, that could happen. The city does have the right to bring it back to you, or staff will bring it back to you in the future for consideration of, of refiling the assessments. Staff's here for your questions, and again, Mr. Wiley is here for if you have any questions.
Mr. Wiley, did you want to come up?
Yeah, I can ask a question while he's coming up, or just, I guess, make a statement. Since I've been here, I've never seen a case where we've abated anything before, before the purchase. So if, if we did anything like that, could we put on there that contingency be that whoever buys it, because you don't know who's going to get it at the sale, whoever buys it has to have it demolished within a certain period of time and cleaned up?
Right.
And that be, the fees be contingent upon that?
You could probably structure it however you wanted to. I would imagine that would be a little bit more complex than what's being asked. I, I would suggest if you are concerned about that, then at some point in the near future, we could bring them back for reassessment. Talk to Mr. Wiley about what a reasonable timeframe would be.
Yeah, I, I would, I don't know off the top of my head whether you could structure it that way, because of course you do have a statutory process for the demolition of dangerous structures. Essentially, I don't know if that would be part of it. I don't, I don't know enough about this property, you know, if that qualifies or if it's under protocol for, for actual demolition on that, whether you can kind of go through that type of, you might be able to condition this type of abatement on something like that. That, that doesn't, if that's not short-circuiting the demo process that you would normally do. I mean, essentially, you would be saying, well, we're not going to then approve the, the waiver of the assessments. And that might be it. You might be able to do something like that, but.
Maybe Mr. Wiley has.
Yeah. Listen to Mr. Wiley. Please just state your name and address, please.
My name is Bruce Wiley. I live at 800 South Second Street, corner of Second Street and Olive. I live across the street from the said property, and I have a brief statement here. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bruce Wiley. I've lived at the corner of South Second Street and Olive since 1977. As you all might be aware, I am here to discuss a piece of property located at 212 Olive, which has been dilapidated, in state of repair over many years. It's been since 1977. It's been really in this bad a shape, but not, not this bad a shape, but it's progressed. Recently, the house on the property has been in a major fire and has been boarded up. It has been called for my attention that this property will be sold at a tax sale in May. My plans are to attend the tax sale and bid on the blighted property with the intent of removing the house, outbuilding the miscellaneous rubbish in short order, and transform the lot into a mobile condition. I fully expect that the cost involved will exceed the value of the vacant lot once the blight has been removed. This particular lot is of poor quality since one-third of it has large slabs of concrete buried under the surface. It was dumped there by a demolition company several years ago. So, I, let's see, as, okay, as I understand, the city currently has several liens against the property that accumulated over the years in an effort to remove the blight associated with the lot, this lot. I'm sure this process has been frustrating, not only for the city, but for our entire neighborhood. What I am asking for here this evening is that all liens be forgiven if I or any successful bidder on the property cleans the property, cleans the property up under a prescribed period of time set by the City Weather Committee. The results of this request will determine whether or not I attend this tax sale with the intention of being a successful bidder. Someone needs to step up and clean up this mess once and for all. I am willing to get the job done if provided the opportunity. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Could you tell me what you, you suppose within short time is?
I'm, I'm thinking less than three months. I've already contacted a contractor to get an idea of what it would cost to, and it's acceptable, there it's probably $7,000 or $8,000, I'm guessing, without any surprise. So I, basically, all I'm trying to do is, I own a good portion of the neighborhood there.
Yeah.
It's, doesn't look like much.
But, so you would have to, I mean, you'd have to go to the sheriff's sale and then...
A-16.
And hope that you get it, or?
Right.
Maybe somebody else would.
If somebody else gets it, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be a high bidder on it because basically, I'm buying aesthetics here. I don't have any use for the lot. The lot is a poor lot, it's not a very buildable.
Sure.
So I'm just basically, I want to clean, clean up my environment, I'm getting my later years, and I want to be able to look at something out there. It's, it's rough now.
Well, plus, it brings down the values of all the houses around it as well.
Definitely.
Yeah, Mr. Kramer, I'm, I'm good with waiving the fee entirely if we can put the stipulations in place. I don't know what those will look like just yet, but I definitely want to protect ourselves a little bit. Obviously, this is a budgeted amount that the city spends on keeping up with everything, you know, going forward, at least we could.
Take that off.
Take that off, a little bit. I mean, it's not much, we've lost money on it, for sure, but can have those protections in place for the city.
So I think, speaking to the City Attorney, if the motion could just include to reserve the right to reassess, then I think that, I think that he would, we would need to waive them at the time of the sheriff's sale so they could get a clean title, but then reserve the right to reassess as sort of the.
Got it.
Thing working with Mr.
That sounds good.
I'm willing to sign any document if not the successful bidder.
Mr. Kramer, is, is it that we cannot locate the individual who currently owns that property?
I don't believe he's.
He, he is currently, he's living across town. He's had his leg amputated from some infection, so he's, there's no going.
Yeah, we had dealings for a decade in.
Yeah.
Court and assessments, and that's why it's at the sheriff's sale now, I believe, just abandoned property.
I'll sit down now.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
Thank you.
There's almost no question.
Yeah, that's it.
So.
Repeat of that proposal.
Sure, so if the, if the Commission was amenable to waiving the special assessment of nuisance in full, then it would be, one, contingent upon Mr. Wiley purchasing at the tax sale, and, two, the motion including that the city reserves the right to reassess the penalties in the future at the determination of the governing body.
I move that.
Second.
It's okay.
Took the words out of my mouth.
Yeah, as, as stated by Mr. Kramer.
Okay.
My second.
Begin, okay, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
Thank you.
Next up, Consider Acceptance of Infrastructure Improvements for Branches 3 Subdivision.
Turn this over to Brian Faust, our Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, I would like to introduce our new Deputy Director of Public Works, Earl Wilkman. Been on board about three weeks.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
The item this evening is to consider acceptance of the public improvements related to Branches 3. The final plan for Branches 3 was approved by the City Commission in June of 2021. Streets, storm, and sanitary have been constructed in accordance with city specifications and the approved plans. All required testing has also been completed. The developer is required to pay a 6% fee for the cost of the improvements to cover the city's inspection cost. As the improvements were constructed per city specifications and passed all required testing, we do recommend that the City Commission accept the public improvements of the Branches 3 Edition Number 3, or the Branches Edition, Edition Number 3. The developer did pay the 6% last week, and so that condition has been met. Open for any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions or concerns? Okay. Very straightforward.
Yeah. So I'm doing it the other day.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve, accept the public improvements as stated by Mr. Faust.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passed. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, bids, contracts, and agreements, 2022 OJP Burn Grant.
It's the Police Chief Pat Kitchens for this item.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, the Police Department is here this evening to ask for you, to give us authority to solicit discretionary grant funds from the Burn discretionary community project grants from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs, the amount of $20,000 for acquisition of 20 tasers. In the late summer of last year, Senator Rand's office was reaching out to local law enforcement agencies, asking if they could assist with federal dollars to support local law enforcement agencies who might have equipment issues. I assured him that the Police Department is generally well taken care of here in our community, but we would review our current stock of equipment to see. We identified a small gap in our taser replacement program. We typically replace about four or five a year in the operational budget of the Police Department, but we had gotten to a point where we had six or seven of them that were needing to be replaced, so we were a little bit behind. And so pursuant to this, I informed him that we would need about $20,000 to catch us back up, to get to a little bit better of a more comfort level with the number of tasers we have. I'll assure you and everybody in the community that each officer is equipped with a taser, it's functioning and working and available for use, but this money and these allocations would help us sort of catch up and get to a little bit more comfort level, so we had a few in, in inventory. On April 11th, I received, I received notice from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs that we were in fact eligible to solicit for $20,000 for the purchase of new tasers. I've attached that document, those documents to the, I've attached those documents to the policy report. There's no local budget impact, this is a direct solicitation. We would get the funds and then purchase the tasers directly from the, from the manufacturer. So again, I would ask you to authorize the Police Department to solicit discretionary grant funds from the Burn discretionary community project grants from the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs, the amount of $20,000 for the acquisition of 20 new tasers. Now, ask, answer whatever questions you might have.
I just have a question about the tasers.
Yes, ma'am.
Are the new ones different than what we have?
I'm sorry, now?
Are the new ones any different than what we have?
The, the slight change that has taken place in the last couple of years with tasers has been a slight reduction in the amperage and voltage. When they first came out, they were pretty strong.
Right.
There's been a lot of data and material and study and research on the effect, and so they are slightly less impactful in terms of the effectiveness of them, but they're, other than that, they're generally the same.
Are they, are they designed so they aren't confused with other service weapons?
Yes, ma'am. Since the inception, we insisted that they are bright yellow, neon bright yellow, you have, would have a very difficult time distinguishing that from a firearm, which I think is probably the, the general concern. So we've always had that. They still remain that way. They are, they feel different, they are lighter, they are smaller a little bit. It'd be very difficult to make the, the mistake of, of switching for a firearm for a taser.
Disconcerting. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So there's no additional training that would have to be introduced? They're going to operate the same as the, the ones you're using now?
Yes, sir. Each officer is required to go to a certification training, and then there's a periodic recertification process to ensure that they still understand how it works. In fact, we just did that about two months ago, it was time for recertification.
Have you been tased?
Yes, sir, I have. The old idea of lead from the front, I said a long time ago now, if we get them, I'd go first, and I did, and it was a terrible idea. It's very painful, it works effectively generally. You're not required to, but peer pressure doesn't generally let you off the hook. Everybody gets tasered when they get them.
Okay.
We don't need to do that.
Be glad to demonstrate it, sir. Anytime.
Ungriff maybe.
I can have an officer here in like five minutes, sir.
Somebody doesn't have a heart problem now.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
No, good.
Okay, then I just need a motion.
Oh, I move that the, that the Police Department here be authorized to solicit directly the $20,000 from the OJP Burn Grant.
Second. Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Consider Award of the Municipal Service Center and Cody Park Parking Lot Project.
Once again, Mr. Faust.
Again, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. This item is to consider a possible contract award for repaving of the Municipal Service Center and Cody Park Parking Lots. Engineering staff did review the condition of both of these lots. Both lots, if you've been out there, have been deteriorating, especially this service center.
Yes, definitely.
And a millon overlay is needed to avoid complete reconstruction in the near future. City staff did develop plans in-house for the project, and it was advertised in Drexel Technologies and at 11 More Times, and we also called firms. Bids were opened on April 20th. Plans were picked up by four separate contractors, with one contractor submitting a bid. The lowest and only qualified bid was from Little Joe's Asphalt in the amount of $136,980. Staff did contact the other bid holders. We were kind of curious why we did receive just the one. One contractor was interested if concrete was part of the job, and it wasn't. One contractor expressed concerns about the volatility in asphalt prices, so he was concerned about bidding it and being held to a price that wasn't current anymore.
Makes sense, correct.
And we did have, in, in that response, two people did say they had some concerns or difficulty meeting some of our bidding requirements, and so that's why we received the one bid. Little Joe's Asphalt is an established asphalt contractor, they worked in the city before, and they've done good work for the city. See, the work in Cody Park, this, what's got on the screen right now is actually the service center. We'd actually be starting where the Thornton Street project ended at the, at the bottom of the screen, and we'd be continuing the drive up through the entrance to the parking lot, as well as the parking lot itself. There are some minor base repairs that are needed, but it basically, a three-inch millon overlay would actually fix that parking lot. The Cody Park parking lot itself is right on Lemon Streets. If you've been out there, that's kind of where our contractor's been staging for the work on rehabbing the ditch there of the creek. And so we're having this project start after he's done. The parking lot needed to be resurfaced anyway. We let him use this parking lot because we knew we needed to resurface it, so he's doing a little bit more damage, and then we'll have that fixed as soon as he's done. The City Commission does generally award a contract to the lowest bidder if that bid is less than the engineer's estimate and whose evaluation by the city indicates that the award will be in the best interest of the city. In this case, Little Joe's is slightly above our estimate, about 5%, but staff does not feel rebidding the project would be a benefit. So staff does recommend the City Commission accept a bid from Little Joe's Asphalt in the amount of $136,980. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
No.
Not a question. I am disappointed that we don't have a, a contractor in this city that would make a bid.
And there could be some circumstances, too. I mean, this is a, a smaller project, so other people might.
We, and, and we, we heard that, I mean, it's a smaller project. They had a fairly tight timeframe, they wanted it done by July. And so a lot of the contractors that are out there have already got work scheduled over much of the year, and so they didn't want to commit themselves to a project with this tight timeline.
Sure.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the bid received from Little Joe's Asphalt in the amount of $136,980 for the MSC in Cody Park Parking Lots.
Second. Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Hengula.
Aye.
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 Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Faust. Okay, next up, Consider Memorandum of Understanding for Countywide Transportation Study.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'm excited about this item. This is a long time coming. Kansas Department of Transportation, the Mid-America Regional Council have stressed the importance of countywide transportation plan to stakeholders in Leavenworth County for years. The creation of a plan is a requirement of project funding, support, and eventual construction. KDOT and MARK have continually advocated for a countywide approach of collaboration among cities and the county to this point that hasn't existed in a cohesive manner. cities and the county to this point that hasn't existed in a cohesive manner. I will point out, this has nothing to do with our transit program.
He was cheering me on there.
This is about...
He can still cheer y'all.
This is about getting people in and out of the county. This is about access, highway access. This is about moving more efficiently through the county, and this is about getting large state grants and work in funding through the Mid-America Regional Council, the federal government. I'm going to walk through this a little bit. In late 2020, a process led by the Port Authority and supported by Leavenworth County and all the cities, so everybody was on board with this, which was really important when you start asking for funding from the state and from the Mid-America Regional Council. Started to draft an RFP that would create a plan that met KDOT and MARK requirements. You hear a lot about plans, why are we always planning? If you don't have these planning documents with the projects laid out, budgets, consensus, then you cannot get in the pipeline for state funding for projects or MARK funding for projects. The resulting plan would also serve to equally evaluate all transportation options, as well as serving as a planning document for pursuing those improvements. A draft RFP was circulated to all the parties in early 2021, and in April 2021, the Port Authority presented the concept and potential cost share structure to the Leavenworth City Commission. Concurrently, the Port Authority and representatives from all the entities refined and approved in RFP, the initial RFP issuance only received one proposal, and so rightfully so. I think the Board of County Commissioners said that's not enough, we need more options to evaluate. So it was reissued, and we received about a half a dozen submissions at that point. A selection team from the cities, I served on it for the City of Leavenworth unanimously selected Kimley Horn to follow, to guide this process, and a joint MOU was drafted, revised, and is making its way around the partner entities for approval. As of tonight's meeting, I believe the Leavenworth County, Tonganoxie, and Lansing have approved the MOU, and it's before baser tomorrow. We still have to get the final approval also from KDOT. The funding allocation is highlighted in the attached MOU and represents the same funding allocation that was presented to the Commission last April. And also, if you see in this packet, I hope you had a chance to look at it, is, you know, the question is, for a study of this size, what are we getting? There's a seven-page scope of services that outlines the process, the deliverables, the criteria of what we can receive from this. I do want to highlight a couple pieces of that MOU. So the first thing is monthly steering committee meetings, so everybody has a seat at the table. Buy-in throughout this process is key, so that's all the cities, the county, Kansas Department of Transportation, Mid-America Regional Council. That leads into engagement, which will be a robust public engagement process, including stakeholder and elected official participation, a branding portion where we'll talk about creating an identifier of what are we trying to do. We're trying to set the county up for the next 10, 20, 30 years of transportation to grow our county. Stakeholder coordination really has some unique focuses. The first round really focuses on region-wide, regional stakeholders, industrial developers, economic development coordinators, first responders, and that'll be six meetings with those groups. A second round of stakeholder meetings with, in person with the communities, unincorporated county, the Port Authority, and of course, all the cities, six meetings related to that. And then, if that was enough, two more rounds of public meetings, where we'll get input again from more of the citizens on some of the options that have been come forth through the first couple of sets of meetings. What I think's really important is the criteria development. Every project examined will be given equal weight at the beginning. No project is going to stand out from the beginning, whether that's K7, whether that's K5, whether that's a new bridge of some kind. They all will be scored upon criteria that we all agree on and develop. Stuff like current congestion, future congestion, access to opportunity, economic vitality, benefit-cost analysis. This may cost this much, but how much benefit are you going to get from it? That's all part of the deliverables of the scope. Project costs, detailed project costs from the options developed is part of the scope of services. Upfront project costs, operations and maintenance costs, right-of-way, which is land acquisition costs, utility costs, environmental impacts, so that what we get at the end is a comprehensive review of all the projects that we discuss. Project benefits, economic development, positioning property for new development will be taken into account as we define Task 403 to project benefits. Access to opportunities, improving access to jobs, safety improvements, all part of what's to be looked at. And then, one of the things I like is you take all that, and there's a prioritization tool that will come out of this, to develop an interactive tool that will show, be able to modify those and see which projects rise to the top based on what you prioritize. The project team will develop a webpage that has a tab with an interactive map for viewing project locations, and if you click on those projects, you'll see more information about its scoring, its weighting, and an interactive table that lists how it's scored on all the different criteria. So the goal is to make everything as transparent and open as possible. Why did this score the way that it did? Well, here's the detailed breakdown in each category of why it scored the way that it did. Finally, a draft report will be circulated to all of the entities and will be presented to all of the governing bodies for feedback before any kind of final report is even considered. And then following that input from the governing bodies, the draft report we finalized and comments received. Schedule is approximately 12 months, that's reasonable for a schedule of this kind or a project of this type. And at the end, we hope that while not everybody may agree fully on it, that the full buy-in process and the adoption of the study will happen amongst all four cities and the county. So that's before you tonight. I guess I'll hit the headline, is what is this cost? It is broken down in your policy report, it was discussed in last April. The city agreed preliminarily to fund 30% of the project, so that is amount at this point not to exceed $90,000. The total scope, the total project is $550,000, not to exceed. If there's any chance that it would go over, that has to come back to the governing body. The layout is 50%, the county estimated $150,000, 30% the City of Leavenworth, 10% for the City of Lansing, and baser and Tonganoxie each 5%. Of course, that's really just based on kind of population and ability to pay and such, with the $250,000 commitment from the state to help in this process. So we don't have the date put in here yet, so the motion, if you are going to move to accept it, would be to, upon completion of the dates in the contract, to authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. We do have the immediate past president of the Port Authority, Greg Cause, here, who really helped guide through the process, but then turned it over to the cities and the governing bodies to go through the scope and the agreement, and then I can answer any questions that you may have as well. The funds for this would be from the city's federal funds exchange dollars. Those are federal dollars that come to the city that we set aside for transportation-related projects.
I don't have a question, but for the general public and for our new commissioners, the reason this is needed is because it's getting harder and harder, slower and slower for us to get between, especially the city of Leavenworth and Kansas City, greater Kansas City. Our Highway 7, which used to be a straight highway, is now full of stoplights. And so these are some things that the Port Authority and the LCDC, Leavenworth County Developments, have been discussing for many years, and so it is really important when businesses look at coming to Leavenworth, they look at that access for distribution in Kansas City. Is that correct?
That is correct. And when these entities that fund these huge projects, these multi-jurisdictional projects come to you, they want to see that you have a united voice and that you've done proper planning considerations. Is your project close to shovel-ready? Have you looked at utility costs and right-of-way costs and total project costs? Do you have buy-in from the entire county? And without a document like this, we don't, we aren't able to answer that question.
Right.
No. It's all spelled out?
So we haven't received any money from KDOT yet?
No, so we won't receive any, though their portion will go to, yeah, to the contract, and they're going to, will provide, be provided with, I believe, monthly invoices for costs as they go, based on the proportionality of our costs.
Yeah, I saw that in here.
Yep.
So, you answered almost all the questions I have here.
Okay. Mr. Cause, did you want to, have any comments or anything? Did you want to come up and?
Greg Cause, past chairman of the Port Authority, still a member of the Port Authority, and I've kind of been involved with this, working with Villanova, with Leavenworth County. Mr. Kramer's done an excellent job of summarizing everything, what the project is. You know, it is a regional project, so if you're looking for something saying we need to improve the intersection at Fourth and Limit, that's probably not going to come out of this study. But if you're looking at something of, you know, where is the county going in the next, as you said, 10, 20, even 30 years, there could be projects identified that may never be completed in my lifetime, but that we would start to plan for, i.e. maybe purchasing right-of-way, things like that. And, you know, if you're going to do a major new highway project or anything like that, purchasing a right-of-way and utilities and all that, it really takes a long time permitting and everything. So that's what this is going to look at. As Mr. Kramer said, Tonganoxie has approved it, Lansing has approved it, it's on the consent agenda for baser for tomorrow night. Leavenworth County has drafted the agreement, so one would assume that they would approve it. It will go to them for formal approval along with the KDOT agreement, and hopefully that would happen in the next two weeks. I don't know if Bill's received the KDOT agreement, he was expecting it any time, so that would probably go to them for their signature for the whole thing, and then they would sign the contract with Kimley Horn. But so far, of all the cities that I've been to, I've had a unanimous vote. Nobody's voted no.
That's great.
The pressure's on.
Thank you, Mr. Cause, if you have any questions.
Yeah, one more question, not necessarily for you, Mr. Cause, but certainly if you've got the answer. Will this, when the study is completed, will there be a published study available to the public?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cause.
Thank you.
Okay, then I just need a motion.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding for the countywide transportation study.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion passed. Okay, next up is first consideration ordinance rezoning 604 Potawatomi from NBD to I-1.
This will be Julie Hurley, the Director of Planning and Community Development. Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. As you said, this is a rezoning request for a 604 Potawatomi from Neighborhood Business District to I-1, which is light industrial. The property is currently occupied by a single-story commercial building, which houses June's Northland right now, and she is looking to retire and sell the building. The property is under contract to be purchased by Stripes Global, which is a service-disabled veteran-owned business that services the medical needs of U.S. veterans, and this rezoning will allow them to utilize that building and reuse it as a manufacturing and distribution and fulfillment center for their business. There are no new additions or new construction that are proposed as part of this, and they have indicated that they intend to provide up to 60 jobs at this location. And the property is located in a hub zone, which is a classification granted by the U.S. Small Business Administration that helps small businesses in urban and rural communities gain preferential access to federal procurement opportunities. And part of that designation is that they employ at least 30% of staff who live in that hub zone, so they're going to be employing a number of folks who live in these top, these census tracts up north. So the Planning Commission considered this item at their April 4th meeting and voted four to zero to recommend approval of this. And just to kind of talk about the I-1 zoning designation, since sometimes industrial zoning districts can sound a little bit intimidating, I-1 is really considered. It's a very low intense-use zoning district, and it is really the only one that allows for any type of manufacturing, which is what they need. We do have a representative from the applicant and a representative for the current property owner here tonight, so I'll let them talk a little bit more about specifically how the business is going to be set up to operate, but this is a very, it's a high-tech medical manufacturing operation. You're not going to see anything from the outside with this, it's just going to be the employees parked there, a couple of delivery trucks coming in and out each day, it's not going to be what you think of when you think of a warehouse or a manufacturing type of operation. So I will let the applicant or the representative of the owner come up and talk a little bit about the operation, or if you have any questions for me before they talk, I can go and answer those, or can get to that after we hear from them.
Okay.
Just one thing.
Sure.
I want to commend you and the Planning Commission on the, I read through all the questions and the discussion back and forth, back and forth about this. Very, very thorough. They really, y'all really did a great job.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the Commission. So my name is Keith Baird, I am going to be served as the chief operations person on site here for Stripes Global. Stripes Global is about six years old, as was indicated, is a service-disabled owned, a veteran-owned company, and so what our goal is, is to seek to supply the needed pharmaceuticals to the VA in prepackaged form, as if anyone takes maintenance medications now, very often it's in a factory bottle, and that's what we would be doing. In addition to, the other part of our business would be to design, develop, and manufacture medical devices, and that's going to be light assembly work, it'll be, you know, plastic housings, circuit boards, things like that. You know, the impact, and one of the big questions was about truck traffic. You know, we envision most of that will be UPS, FedEx-type trucks in and out of the neighborhood. We don't envision any large charter trailers at this point.
Good to know.
Sure.
All right. Is there any other questions at this point that I can answer?
Kind of timeframe we looking at to...
To get going?
Yeah, to get going.
So ideally, we would take possession of the building July 1st and immediately start what little bit of renovation we have to do. The, for the, I'm assuming most of you have been in the facility. It's an immaculate, yeah, it's an immaculate condition, and so most of what we're going to have to do unfortunately is remove a lot of what's in there.
That's too bad.
Yeah, yeah, it is, but that's, that'll be the bulk of it. So we anticipate, we've already started operations virtually with some of these, so the rest of it would just come online as we can get the facility renovated. We're anticipating three months total on that, so I'd say Q4 of this year, we're looking to be in operation.
Sure. How many other hubs do you guys have across the country?
So we got one. The company is based in the Seattle, Washington area. The owner, the service-disabled veteran, was looking to expand his operation. As I said, it's about six years old, and I had been working with him, as well as another group locally that was consulting with them, and he felt that there was such a strong presence here that he wanted to move his business here.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah.
I hate to see June's leave, but she keeps asking me, when are we going to be done with this? You know, June.
I think she's anxious, I think she's anxious to retire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, I think this is a really good fit for our community, looks like to me.
Well, thank you.
You're the jumpers.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah.
Cool.
Any questions?
No.
Mr. Baird, can you talk briefly just about how you plan to recruit some? Are you going to have a job fair? Do you work through workforce partnership, or how are you going to fill those 30% of jobs in that area and then the rest of your jobs in the community?
Sure, sure. So it'll be all the above, right? I've already been in contact with the person that coordinates the job fairs on post, and so we are actively going to be chasing the homesteading service people, as well as using third-party HR or third-party recruiting efforts for that area. One correction, it's not just that hub zone where the facility is, but it's any hub zone around, yeah. So it would be, it would draw from any of those areas locally, and I think Lansing... And I think Lansing has one. I think, I know Leavenworth has, I think, two areas designated as hub zones. So we'll seek to pull in from all those.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I might just add, I do want to just put on the record that, again, this being a zoning case, there are the certain golden factors that are in the staff report for your consideration. And though, you know, like things like jobs and timing and such are certainly important as a zoning matter, we do have to have reference to that. So I just do want to acknowledge that those, analysis of those are in your staff report. If you do have questions about those, that'd be fine. But otherwise, we want to get on the record at least that there's been a consideration of those. And I know you have read the staff report.
Right.
And such, and that, you know, if your motion is to approve tonight, that the minutes would reflect your consideration of those golden factors.
Okay. Yeah, so we just need a, for the first consideration ordinance rezoning 604 Potawatomi from, like I said, NBD to I-1. So I just need a consensus.
Yes.
Consistent?
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is Leavenworth Land Bank.
So I think you would start by requesting a motion to recess from this Leavenworth City Commission and to enter into a meeting at the Leavenworth Land Bank?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay.
And then I have appointment of officers.
Hey. Julie Hurley. Yep, I'll just run through this really quick. There's a couple of orders of business for you all. And the first is the appointment of officers that is required in the ordinance that we passed establishing the land bank. So, the positions required are chairperson, vice-chairperson, secretary, and treasurer. And so, we were just trying to keep those in line with really roles that are already existing on the commission. And so, staff would suggest the format of assigning the chairperson to the current mayor, vice-chairperson to the mayor pro temp, secretary to the immediate past mayor. And then talking about the secretary role, really, the city clerk fills, for all intents and purposes, keeping the minutes for that. So it's sort of in name only. And then treasurer being the financial claims revere. And again, a lot of, most of that work is going to be staff, and so passing that information on along to you. But that would be the format that we would suggest for selecting the officers.
Okay, then I just need a motion, I guess, to point the officers.
Is everybody willing to take these positions?
Second.
Yes.
I move that we do this, the officers as stated.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner.
Aye.
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 Okay. And then now we, consideration of proposals for 600 Cherokee.
Yep, so the Commission, at the last study session, heard proposals for 600 Cherokee. As you'll recall, in January of this year, that property had been transferred to the land bank, just for ownership and tax purposes. And so, in considering these proposals, it's the land bank that needs to take action on any of those. So, you can have a discussion as, acting as the land bank board of trustees in terms of that, and then recommended action would be a motion to select a proposal as presented for the rehabilitation of 600 Cherokee. Or you can have a motion to request more information from the applicant or to take no action.
And Madam Chairperson, I might also recommend that if the land bank's motion to select a proposal, that it be done, subject to, of course, the negotiation and ultimate final approval of an appropriate agreement for the land transfer as well. So, accepting a proposal would essentially be directing staff to enter into negotiations on that point, but not actually agreeing to the actual transfer until and unless a transfer development agreement is brought to the land bank for approval.
Okay. So, it looks like I just need a motion to direct staff?
Or a discussion first.
Discussion?
Of the item.
Mr. Wilcott, what's the name of your company again?
Wilcott Brewing.
Brewing Company. I almost said liquors.
Oh, because you're thinking of, yeah.
They don't deal in hard liquor.
No, I know.
But there used to be a.
There used to be a Wilcott brewing. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, no. I would tell you that I took a ride out there. My wife and I took a ride out to your place, and when I walked in, I was fairly impressed. The place, as promised, family-oriented. There are three kids work there. Cleaning up and, you know, and that kind of thing. Nobody's touching the alcoholic beverages. But in addition to only their beers, excuse me, ales, in addition to only their stuff that they brew, they also offered local wines. And I'm assuming, I hope correctly, that that would hold true for here, you'd be looking at local wines to be offered also.
I hope you work down later.
Yeah.
But when I walked in, there was a beanbag game, you know.
Like the cornhole?
Probably called Cornhole. Yeah, it was laid out on the floor.
Yeah.
Right there as I walked in. My only mistake with that place was I went up there thinking they opened up at 11:00 in the morning. So, but we walked around the town, nice little town you got there. Not as big as this one, though. But the town is really nice and their operation and facility, I was given a tour of the place, is really, was very impressive to me. And I understand, and I think everybody knows, the, what's it called? The art gallery, the folks proposing the art gallery have withdrawn their proposal.
They have withdrawn their proposal. So we're just, it's just the Wilcott Brewing.
Mr. Kramer, can you, for the general public, I wasn't serving on the City Commission last year when the city acquired the property, 600 Cherokee. Can you kind of bring us full circle, kind of how it happened? And I know there's a lot of questions out there on.
Sure.
Those are tax dollars being used and to where we are today.
Absolutely. So, last summer, I did a presentation to the City Commission, it's still available on YouTube, of how does economic development work? And so, basically, we have a lot of tools in the tool bag. I think I laid out 13 different kind of tools that we've used. Those are everything from tax abatements to sales tax tools that we have. The city has also, a couple times, and not the too distant future, purchased properties that the private market, through information that we have from the private market or just time, have determined that are not feasible for the private market investment. Some of those include the former Ramada Inn Hotel in downtown Leavenworth, which the City of Leavenworth purchased out of foreclosure from a bank in Tennessee, and then razed to the ground and then did an RFP to developers. Once we removed the initial hurdle of the purchase price and the demolition and had a site ready for development, then we got some good response to that. Carnegie Arts Center is a building that the city took over. We, the maintenance on that was too much for anybody to undertake, so the city had that and then turned it over to a developer for, again, for a dollar. And that property, both those properties are now viable uses. Club Venom or 600 Cherokee has been vacant for more than a dozen years. And over the years, really led by Main Street and Wendy Shite, we've had a dozen developers go through that building. I've sat with those developers as they try to figure out how to pencil this, how to make this work with the rates that you can charge in Leavenworth, with the re-roofing costs, the electrical work, the remediation work. And the purchase price remained a constant 205,000 for that entire time. The private market said it does not work. So, one of the options, one of the 13 tools that I presented last summer, is that the city steps in. We don't like to do that. We don't like to own property. But in this case, it is a, look at the corners there. There's Haymarket Square, there's Tenpenny who has invested in that building, there's a city parking lot that we've invested in to make that area better for the patrons of Groness and all the neighboring businesses. And yet, that property's at vacant. So, the city took the step of buying it. How did we purchase that? The city purchased that with countywide sales tax dollars that are, 15% of our annual countywide sales tax dollars goes into an economic development fund. We use that to grant businesses, small business grants, in amounts of $5,000 or $15,000. We give out dozens of those a year to business. We've done that when CPAC brought their operation to the city and we gave them $50,000 a year for the jobs that they brought to the community. So those economic development dollars, that economic development set aside was an investment to get those, to remove the blight and bring activity back to the corner. And so, that's what we did. And we put it out to bid, and still even with the potential of a building at no cost or a small cost, we had some very smart people, mechanical engineers, structural engineers, people with construction companies, look at that building, and we still only received a few proposals because of the condition of that building. So that's where we are today, trying to get a property back on the tax rolls, but maybe more importantly, bringing that building back online into a productive 28-block historic downtown. It is in the historic district. Anything that, should it be Mr. Wilcott or somebody else does there, will have to go through the Preservation Commission, so it will maintain its historic place in the City of Leavenworth. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so then at this point, do I need a motion to direct staff?
I can make that motion?
Yep.
Okay. I would like to make a motion on the proposal for 600 Cherokee redevelopment to direct staff to enter into an agreement with the Wilcott Brewing Company.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
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 Okay, asked.
Where investment from?
Now we have to, yeah, it is, yeah. Okay, so, we go into executive session? So I need a motion for that?
So the land bank goes into executive session?
Yes.
The land bank is also subject to the provisions of the Kansas Open Meetings Act, which would include the provisions.
So we have to go.
Do we go? You can go wherever you'd like. You can clear this room, or you can go.
We'll go over there. But we do have to read the motion as stated.
We need the motion, so someone needs to read it.
You can make the motion, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I can?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to recess into executive session to discuss attorney-client matters related to the transfer of 600 Cherokee pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship except per KSA 75, oh, I can't read that number, 4319B2. The open meeting to resume in the City Commission Chamber at?
7:40.
7:40. City Manager Paul Kramer and City Attorney David E. Waters are requested to be present during the executive session. Need a second.
Second.
Okay, begin voting, Commissioner.
Aye.
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 I need a motion to adjourn as the Leavenworth Land Bank Board of Trustees and reconvene as the Leavenworth City Commission.
Second.
Okay, second. Okay, begin, Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
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 Okay. So, the next up is, looks like Commissioner Hingula, or no, not Commissioner Hingula, Commissioner Martin.
Oh, yes, yes.
Your consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, do move to approve the claims for April 9, 2022, through April 22, 2022, in the amount of $548,697.35. Another amount for payroll number eight, effective April 22, 2022, in the amount of $362,847.29, includes police and fire pension, in the amount of $9,038.36.
Second. Begin voting with Commissioner Hingula.
Aye.
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 Okay, that ends our session.
I don't have anything tonight.
Mr. Kramer, did you have anything?
Nothing tonight.
Hey, Commissioner Hingula, did you have anything?
Yeah, just, you know, this is the end, we're coming up very closely on the end of the fasting month of Ramadan, and that comes up this weekend, so to my Muslim friends, Aide Mubarak.
Yeah, God bless and have a great week.
I don't have anything tonight, thank you all.
Yeah, second what Mr. Wilson said. God bless and have a good enjoyable start to our warm months ahead of us.
I hope so, yeah, I'm right there with you. So no, have a great evening, so just need a motion.
So I move we adjourn this meeting.
Need a second.
A thirty.
What?